All right, well, we'll go ahead and get started. Want to be respectful of everybody's time. So thank you, Counselor Perez and Counselor Govan for joining us, Commissioner Colton Harris, members of the press that are here, and thank you to Sean from our staff who's behind the Focus Springfield logo. We appreciate you getting the link out and getting us started here today. And so we will, we will jump right in to the commissioner's update and take any questions from counselors. I'm hoping, hoping for good news and then we will go, go from there. Commissioner Colton Harris, thank you for joining us once again.
Sure. So thank you, counselors, for the invitation and my ability to speak with you. I am extremely appreciative. So last month was not good, as you know. January, we saw, we saw 9,498 COVID positive cases in that one month. In the month of December, we saw 5,359 cases. So we had really high months in December and January. And if you go back to November, it was only 1,859 cases. Let me turn this phone off. So we had a month last month was just devastating. Omicron really devastated our community as well as our neighborhoods. And I'll talk a little bit about the neighborhoods and vaccination rates in a second. As you, if you look at the data over the last six weeks, the week of January 23rd, which was the week prior to the last one, there was 1,440 cases. We have gone down to 707 cases. So we have cut the number of cases in half that we had experienced. As you know, we had a high January, the week of January 9th, of 2,773 cases. So to go down to 707 is really something that we can celebrate in terms of the numbers, but we are not there as far as our vaccination rates are concerned. And I'll talk about that in a minute. The age groups continue to be a high, 50% are under the age of 30, 25.6% are between 31 and 50, and then 23.5% are 51 and older. The 0 to 10 year old age group of the cases we have, that 707, 144 of them were from 0 to 10. And you know that many of those young people cannot be vaccinated because under the age of five, we don't have a vaccine. 11 to 20, we had 115, 21 to 30, 101, 31 to 40, 109, 41 to 50, 72, 51 to 60, 83, 61 to 70, 42, 71 to 80, 29, and 81 to 90, 11, and 91 to 100, there was one case. So where we really get concerned is that 50 and older age group, particularly the 81 and over age, 61 and over age group, because those are the individuals who could potentially wind up in the hospital, particularly if they have comorbidities or underlying conditions. So that is, that's the data I'm going to share with you. The data is up on the city's website, as you know. So you can, there is, I have other graphs up there, but I post them every Monday. I didn't post them until Tuesday this week, and I apologize for that. As far as vaccines are concerned, the number of individuals fully vaccinated in the Commonwealth is 78.5. The number of fully vaccinated individuals in Springfield increased slightly from 61.7 to 62.1. 01128, which is a ZIP code, as you know, in the 16 Acres neighborhood, continues to have the highest percentage of fully vaccinated individuals at 74%. Indian Orchard and Counselor Govan and I were just talking about that, continues to have the lowest vaccination rate of individuals, which is at 51%. Seven of our 11 ZIP codes had no change in the percentage of fully vaccinated individuals. 01128, 01129, 01119, 01107, 01108, 01105, and 01151. Those numbers are still the same as last week. And so the remaining four ZIP codes, 01118, 01103, and 01104, and 01109, had a 1% increase in the number of COVID-19 cases. I'm sorry, in the vaccination rates remain the same. I do have the data for each one of the neighborhoods. So if you want to ask a specific question about a neighborhood, I'm happy to answer that question. As far as deaths were concerned, I know that Counselor Hurst asked me about deaths last week, and I'm sorry, two weeks ago. And right now, the city through January 31st is at 340 deaths since the beginning of the pandemic. And those are deaths related only to COVID-19 that we have separated, obviously, from the rest of the deaths in the city. So I will stop there and see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, on the death toll, do we have something for, like, since December to now?
Yeah, I can go back and, and look at December. So December to now, so I have them by date. So I would, what I'll do is calculate those for you, but I can probably quickly, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, 20, 30, 30, 50. I have 58 from December 1st to now.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I see, we see the case count going down. Have we heard anything from Bay State and Mercy? I know during the peak of the surge, there was a lot of concern around the emergency room wait times and the issue of, you know, individuals, you know, seeking healthcare for various reasons unrelated to COVID, and then the really pressure that COVID was putting on, on that. Have we heard from them about, you know, if that is improving with the cases going down? Or have we not heard from them on that?
I have not heard from them on, you're talking about E D E R wait times for the general public. I do know anecdotally that individuals have called and said the wait times in the emergency rooms are less. As a matter of fact, they're going into emergency rooms and they have not as packed as they have been. But I have not heard, or have not asked, I can certainly ask, whether or not the, the hospital system itself at Mercy and Bay State is experiencing lower wait times in their emergency departments.
Yeah, I know, I know some weeks ago it was a challenge. So, you know, I just would be curious if it was coming down. But I appreciate the data you've been able to present today and the ongoing efforts. Counselor Govan or Counselor Perez, did you have any questions for the Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner.
We'll go to Counselor Perez, and then we'll go to Counselor Govan. Go ahead, Counselor Perez.
Thank you, Jesse. Commissioner, could you tell me what's the vaccination rate on 01107?
It's 58%, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I don't have no further question. Thank you.
Counselor Govan?
Yes, like you said, Commissioner, we were talking earlier about Indian Orchard, and it's a problem child in the city regarding the vaccination rate. So we, like I said, we were thinking about having some community engagement meeting to help some of those younger people. I'm glad that you said that 50% of the young people are not vaccinated, under 30. So I'm wondering if we could have some type of community engagement with them. Does the city have any resources that we might be able to tap into? Because especially young people, they might be attracted by food. So if we had food and, and, you know, some doctors and nurses that could talk about the vaccine and maybe convince them to get vaccinated. Because I actually have one friend, her son, my son's age, he's probably around 35. And he said, oh, I'm still thinking about it, and I'm still thinking about it. And I just want them to just push a little bit and get them over the edge.
So we have a group, Counselor Govan, called the Youth Vax Force. So Youth Vax Force is a group of young people, dynamic young people. One of them is a third-year medical student, Cassandra. And so what I'd like to be able to do is link you or with that group. And there are medical providers working with them. Dr. McAdoo is working with them. And then we do have other people on Vax Force who, on the adult Vax Force, I'll put it that way, who are extremely engaged and I know would love to do some education. So why don't I give you that contact information? I will email it to you tomorrow, and I'll ask them to reach out to you. Maybe that'll be a better way to do that.
All right, that sounds great. Thank you so much.
Very good. Thank you so much, Counselor Govan. Are there any further questions for the Commissioner today?
That's what I had. Thank you so much for continuing to be steadfast in this fight.
Very good.
Could I make a comment, please?
Of course.
I just want to personally thank Commissioner Helen Colton. I've been involved with the dispersment of the kids to the homes. It's working fine. I see the, 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 the community getting engaged. Probably at that point, I have Josiah, he's in the school committee now, and he has what is called the youth program. Could you forward the information as well to me? So I could engage Josiah and, and the other youth that he works with in terms of getting out these young people to vaccinate. I also have a 30-year-old that I'm, every day, they, they still thinking about it. And it's the misconception information that's out in the community. One of the other one is the religious community. I'm battling with them because of the misconception they have about this vaccination. I mean, there's so many myths out there. So please, could you forward the information as well so we could create a net? And thank you, Saida, for bringing it forward because it's well needed that the information be disseminated among the youth specifically. Thank you, Helen, for all.
I will certainly do that. And Josiah is very impressive. I look forward, I haven't met him, but I look forward to working with him. He's very impressive and his heart is in the right place. Obviously, he's a young person who is excited to do good things. So that's good. And the other thing is the faith community. We have a faith group. And I know that we have some of the churches from your community, from the Hispanic community or the Latin community who are a part of that. So I can give you that information as well. Because we do have people from the faith community who are on board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. And we've just been joined by Counselor Edwards. And I will say, we're all very excited about Josiah and his work. There's not, there's not too many people in government that give me some seniority. So I'm excited that he's, that he's been elected. So with that said, just one more question, Commissioner, are we still distributing rapid tests?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Is that on the same schedule as previously?
Yes. So we're still at the libraries that Mason Square, East Forest Park and Forest Park. New North is still doing an amazing job getting those test kits out at the department. We're handing them out every Tuesday and Wednesday from 10 to 2, I think about it. So yes, and we still have test kits. The, the traffic has slowed a bit, but we still have the test kits and we're still trying to get them in the hands of, of our residents.
Excellent. And the testing site at STCC seems to be being, I haven't heard any complaints out of there either.
I have heard a couple of concerns about not getting results in a timely way. Now, that could be, that could be due to a lot of factors. Eastfield Mall, as you know, there, they've slowed down quite a bit. I was out there the other day, and I think maybe there are two or three people in, in, in the line. They were just nonexistent. So testing is, but, but the STCC is doing their testing, but a couple of people have called me about their test results and, and not getting them. And so, and that's only a couple of people. I don't want to say it's widespread because that would be inaccurate.
Yeah, I, I haven't received any calls on that. But certainly, I'm sure you've, you've followed up and could be a technical issue with the individual or just a situation relative to that, that one case. But much appreciated in that regard. I do, we do have Counselor Edwards and Counselor Hurst that have joined. Do either of you have any questions for the Commissioner today? Counselor Edwards, no. Counselor Hurst?
Just a quick question, Commissioner. I apologize for getting here late and probably missing all the numbers. I asked a question last week regarding how it is that we're accounting for the individuals who might take a home test and test positive at home? And how do we factor those into the numbers? I'm, I'm not 100% sure if you responded. And if you did, I think I'm still trying to figure out how that works. Because I clearly missed something.
There is no requirement for an individual to report a home test to result to the Department of Health and Human Services. The home test results are kept with the individual unless they want to share them or unless they need some intervention such as hospitalization or they need one of our nurses, and they'll call us. But home test kits, there's no requirement of, not just in the city, in the state, or across the nation to report those results.
So we start seeing a drop in numbers. How do we attribute that to, you know, cases coming down and, you know, you know, the surge actually reaching its peak? I mean, what, what is, how do we account for those?
How do we account for the home test kit results?
Well, how, how do we account for the numbers, right? So I'd imagine if folks aren't, if you test positive based off of your home kit and you're not reporting it, that means that you don't get that data. And so if we see a 400, you know, a 400 number drop in COVID-19 cases, why would we not attribute it to those individuals who are at home who have taken these tests but not reported it? I mean, how do we account for those in the numbers?
Honestly, we can't. There is no way for us to account for the numbers that I get are the numbers of the PCR tests that are done at Eastfield Mall or STCC. There is no way, and I think there's a national conversation about this in terms of the numbers going down across the nation. You know, we have been flooded with home test kits from the federal government and the state. So we don't have a way of accounting for those numbers. And that's where we are with it, unfortunately.
Understood. Thank you, Commissioner.
But you know where you, you, you might see it in the hospitalizations. You know, if, if there were critical COVID-19 positive cases, they would probably wind up either with their primary care physician or with, or within the hospital. We ask in the city, once they have a home test kit and it's positive, we require a PCR. So I know as far as our employment, employee base is concerned, what those numbers are because we, we ask for the follow-up.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
I'd say, actually, good segue to a question I wanted to ask, but I do have, I see Counselor Govan has her hand up as well. So Counselor Govan, go ahead. We might have lost Counselor Govan, so we'll, we'll circle back to her.
This morning about, people are concerned about that, that people are taking home tests and maybe they're positive. So what they're doing is they're testing the, I want to say sewer water to see what the levels are, the wastewater. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, thank you so much. So they're testing the wastewater to see what the COVID levels are there. And they said that they have seen a decrease in those levels in the wastewater.
Yes, in the Commonwealth, we have seen a decrease in, in the COVID-19 in wastewater. So those, that's all good news because it means even the home test, to your point, it means even individuals doing home tests, the numbers are going in the right direction.
Do we have that data from the, locally? I've seen it reported out of, out of Boston, but has that testing occurred through Water and Sewer here?
Yes, it's my understanding that Water and Sewer here was sending their results to the Commonwealth. And so that report should include the entire Commonwealth and not just specifics. But you know, I can certainly call our Water and Sewer Department, and I have not done that, and ask them what, what they're seeing specifically in our area for the wastewater. And I, I will put that on my list.
Okay, excellent, excellent. A question I have for you, Commissioner, was, you know, relative to, you know, folks testing at home following the, the, you know, rules around quarantining and isolation related to those home tests. You know, I've seen some individuals talking about an endemic stage of COVID-19 and, you know, different viewpoints on when that might take place and what that might look like. And I'm just curious if you have any thoughts on it or if we, you know, heard from the state about their thoughts on that concept and what that would mean, really. Because I, you know, I think most folks seem to say we're not there yet. But do you have a vision of what that looks like and how that, how that factors in for communities like ours that have been hit so hard over the last two years?
The CDC and the state will, when, when the pandemic becomes endemic, I'm not sure what that data is going to look like. Because if you think about it, nobody, the CDC nor the state has given us an endgame. No one has said to us, this is where we want COVID-19 cases to be in order for us to say that it's endemic or for us to say we are moving out of this. Right now, people are talking about new variants and hopeful that new variants aren't going to substitute Omicron. And so I cannot give you that information, Counselor. I wish I could. But I don't really think that anybody can tell you, what does it look like when we say we're coming out of this pandemic? What is that number? And that's a part of the discussion that just is continuing to happen with the people at the state and at the CDC.
Yeah, I think, I think that's really the question. Because, you know, as, as the two years have gone on, we've seen the guidance continue to evolve as, as we gain more knowledge of the virus, as the, as the virus evolves itself genetically. And I think in the beginning, people sort of envisioned getting to zero, right? That we would get to zero, there'd be total eradication. And, and I think, you know, I just want to understand what the state and, and the federal government, what their thoughts are on, on what that looks like or if it looks like zero and what that means for, for our community. So it sounds like there's not an answer to that yet, but we will continue to seek that guidance.
We'll continue to ask the questions. I doubt that we will ever get to zero. I, I think COVID is here. I think COVID is something that we are going to have to figure out how to live with. And I do believe unless we vaccinate the world. So we live, obviously, you all know this. We live in a world that has globalization. We travel around the world. Unless we get to a place where we can vaccinate and really work with all parts of, of the world, that we're always probably going to have some variant of COVID. The question becomes, how effective are the vaccines against the variants? And that is our concern for our city with a low vaccination rate. We want to at least try to get to a place where our vaccination rate is at a, a point where we feel that we can start to think about normalization.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right. Are there any further questions for the Commissioner from counselors on the call today?
Yes, Jesse. Commissioner, what's the overall vaccination within the city?
Sure. The, the overall, the number of fully vaccinated individuals in the Commonwealth is 78.5. The number of fully vaccinated in the city of Springfield is 62.1.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. So seeing no further questions. As always, Commissioner, thank you so much for, for taking the time to join us. Did you have anything else that you'd like to share with the counselor? Any requests that you have of the council at this time?
Well, as you know, we had the city employees working two days remote. Because our numbers were so high, we will all be back in on the 14th. So we, all fully staff will come back on the 14th, which is next Monday. We wanted to make sure we had at least three weeks of downward trend as far as the data was concerned. And that has happened. I anticipate we're going to have a fourth week as we go through this week of a downward trend. So that will be something that will happen on next Monday. The mask mandate is still in place. I anticipate that the mask mandate will stay in place until March 1st, when the, it will be reevaluated. You already know that February 28th, the Desi, the Department of Education for Students will be making their recommendation around mask mandates. And so people are really looking at the end of February, beginning of March as a time where we can start to think about, can we relax some of these restrictions? So that is another update.
All right, certainly. Well, thank you very much. At this time, seeing no further questions, we will move towards adjournment. Hope that everybody has a safe rest of your evening. I hope your family stay healthy. And thank you all for your continued work, especially Commissioner Colton Harris. And also thank you to the members of the press that joined for helping to keep everybody informed. Everybody have a good day.
If I may, Counselor Hurst, you asked about the deaths last week. I don't quite recall what that was, but I did, we did have 340 deaths since the beginning of the pandemic. I just wanted to make sure you had that information.
Omicron. Wasn't it around the, the, the impact of Omicron as it relates to the deaths in the city of Springfield? Did we have, do we have any data regarding that?
I think that was, Counselor Letterman, was that where you went with your question around December?
Well, I think we asked, Counselors, before you joined, I had asked relative to December to now. And I think it was, the Commissioner had the number. I don't know if they, if they, if it's sequenced enough for us to know in the data which deaths are specifically related to Omicron or Delta, but you could probably get an idea of it via the timeline. Commissioner, does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, we can go back and look at, when did we, when do we have the data that says that Omicron was the highest percentage of our hospitalizations and cases? And so we should be able to sequence that. So I didn't realize that was the specific question. So at our next meeting, what I'll do is just pull out the data from that, when the state first said we were experiencing majority Omicron until now. Because we're still experiencing majority Omicron right now. So Delta has pretty much dissipated or is a very small slice of the positive cases at this point. But I will, I will do that. I thought you asked me the number, but I will, I will dig down and make it more specific.
I probably did, but.
It's okay.
So, so what was the number for, for December to now? I'm sorry. Did you, were you able to access that?
Well, I think Counselor Letterman just asked me for December, which was 68. But I do have through, I do have through January 31st. So I will add the 68 to the 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, 20, 22, 24, 26, 32. So right now, it would be, I'll add the 34 to the 68, and that's, but I will do a better count for you. Because I'm looking at all of these lists that I have of names and dates of death. But I will do a better analysis for you. So that, that would be 102. 102 of the deaths that I'm seeing here are from December to now, which, as you know, is, is almost one-third of what I just said our number was. Yeah.
That's a lot. That is a lot.
Uh, I will, I have them here. I have the data, so I'll pull it out and I'll present it to you next, when we next meet.
Are, are we parsing out those individuals who have gone to the hospital for some other reason, but who just so happened to have covid? Are we, i- i- or is it just deaths? Um, if you've died and you have covid, uh, that is we're counting you as in those numbers. I mean, are we, are we parsing it out at all? Um, does that make sense?
There are two columns that I have. One, one column is very specific uh, to the cause of death. And then covid nineteen is on top of that. For example, I have acute respiratory distress syndrome on people, respiratory failure. So the, the, the cause of death is here, but covid nineteen uh, appears to be the primary cause that has these individuals expiring. So they had comorbidities, then they got covid, and um, that led to their death. So the covid nineteen, um, and, and we have some young, young folks here. Um, I was looking uh, at the data and looking at the ages. We have people who were born um, in the seventies. Um, it's just, you know, it's heartbreaking when you look at these um, these ages.
Do we have their vaccination status? Do we have their vaccination status?
We do not. So what I get is the burial, is the death, is the burial certificates. It, it does not have on there whether they were vaccinated or not.
Okay.
And I don't know if there's any way for us to know that unless the hospital, um, in looking at each patient's chart, noted that somewhere, and that could be data that the hospitals could uh, parse out for us.
Cause I know we have the vet vaccination status of uh, yeah, we are, we've heard in the past, including the data, the vaccination status of positive cases. We've been able to see, or at least I've seen reported, that you can see uh, how many total cases in the state and how many are considered breakthrough cases versus unvaccinated. Um, that is just such a large percentage of the, of the total number. And I suppose that would be attributed to the, the um, the, I'm sorry, I've lost the word, but the agent level, tran- trans- transmission level of Omicron. Um, but I, yeah, I, I think uh, we're right to pursue down that a little bit.
But you know that the um, hospitalizations um, have been going up. I mean, you know that Bay State and Mercy have been strained. So uh, even at the worst time during Delta, there was never a time where we had two hundred and twenty to two hundred and fifty people um, hospitalized. So it doesn't surprise me that um, the deaths are, are increasing. That's just a, that's a, a faction of the fact that overall hospitalizations um, have increased. And then I did see some data from the state that showed that um, over fifty percent of the individuals who were hospitalized were unvaccinated. Now remember, it used to be seventy percent are vaccinated and thirty percent are unvaccinated. That unvaccinated group started to um, that unvaccinated group or vaccinated group started to creep um, down. Um, and so it, you know, it, if you look at the, if you go onto the state's website, you can see the Bay State numbers, and I think they're about fifty, fifty now, vaccinated, unvaccinated.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Um, all right, everybody. So we'll move, we'll move now towards adjournment, but I appreciate uh, appreciate that additional dialogue.
We done?
We're done.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna eat. You all had, have you all had dinner?
Not yet.
Okay, yeah, take care.
Thank you.